All right, to start off tonight, we have several different information presentations. And the first one being the student access to instructional technology led by Rita Lyons.
Good evening, on a nice cold evening. Hope you had a warm day somewhere inside today. Last month in December, I think someone mentioned on the board where are we with a recommendation on increasing our student access at the middle level. And so, we are here tonight to bring you our proposal on that. We'll be coming back in February for a vote on this. Connie Smith has really led this project with our technology action plans. And so, I'm just going to turn it right over to her and let her get started on this.
Thank you. As Rita mentioned, we've been involved in a year-long study at the middle school level in an effort to identify the type of technology needed that would truly make an impact on student engagement, learning, and achievement. We've investigated multiple devices and peripherals in both the core and non-core academic areas and are ready to make a recommendation this evening. Tonight, it's with unanimous agreement from our TAPS teachers, involved in the process and consensus from all of our middle school principals that we are proposing a solution which we believe will increase for all our middle school students their engagement in all academic content areas, increase the breadth and scope of their educational opportunities, and provide equity of access for students regardless of the school building they attend or the technology available to them at home. The decision of the TAPS teachers, agreed upon by middle school principals, is the request for the board to approve a one-to-one iPad deployment at all nine middle schools, impacting all students and staff at this level. With many different device types and versions of those devices, the TAPS staff wished to provide the rationale for the choice of the iPad. Our teachers really believe the iPad provides all of the major components of a laptop that students have been used to, plus it provides added value and unmatched features from any other device. It encourages the building of technical skills to include capturing and editing of photo and video. It includes students' communication skills being increased as unique opportunities for expanding both their oral and written skills via new ways to present their learning. Creativity and confidence are built as interaction with the new media that is unique to the iPad's features, provides, and makes possible. The iPad also provides the benefit of 24/7 access to digital content to include interactive textbooks and resources not otherwise available to students both in the classroom and once they leave the classroom. As you know, once print media is published, it is immediately out of date. The iPad also provides both teachers and students the capability of creating new types of learning materials via apps and content creation programs. Additionally, the iPad prepares students for their future by infusing their learning with the types of technology that they will encounter once they graduate and join the workplace. The interactivity features of the device allow students immediate feedback and also allows teachers the ability to track for differentiation of content when applicable. The engagement factor with hundreds of thousands of free apps to support learning is unmatched with any other type of device and is very much suited for the middle school student. And finally, the portability of the device achieves the district's goal identified in the 2013 bond of increasing equity and access to technology and allows for student learning in ways not currently possible. We have seen a shared excitement and agreement by all of our TAPS staff for this proposal to the board as the iPad provides opportunities to engage students in cross-curricular learning activities in both core and non-core academic areas. As mentioned before, we've had the opportunity to expand involvement this semester to all nine middle schools to ensure consensus and to be sure we get it right. Dr. Rod Smith, principal at Frontier Trail Middle School, is here this evening representing our middle school principals and TAPS teachers, and he is going to share some of the excitement that he's witnessed with the involvement of several of his teachers this past year.
First of all, thank you for letting me represent on behalf of the nine middle school principals. And as Connie said, we've had some great discussion this last year about how to best use devices to support teaching and learning. And as she said, FT is one of the pilot schools. So, I'm just going to just quickly go through some examples of some things that I've been able to see through walkthroughs in the building and actually participate in, which has been really fun with the iPads. One of the first examples is in foreign language. Our Spanish teachers have been using an app that's one that most of us, I'm sure, have heard of or used through iBook. And the students use iBook to write their stories in Spanish, and then they present them to the class, and then the class is learning the vocabulary as those lessons are being presented. One that I really like is in French. It's an app I'm not familiar with, but it's called Duolingo. And it's much like, a French teacher said, the best way to think of it, it's kind of like some of the Rosetta Stone commercials you see and how that kind of works. Duolingo allows the students to take the iPad and the word is spoken to them, and then they have to write it correctly in French. Both of our, both of the foreign language teachers at FT talked to me about Connie's comment about portability. And we don't have a language lab in the middle schools, but if students had an iPad or device, that would be something they could do in the classroom as well. Kind of an interesting thing happened on Tuesday. I had a science teacher send me an email and said, hey, I'm real excited about Monday's professional development, some things I learned. How soon would we have a device, an iPad, something like that, so we can do some things in science? And I said, well, as a matter of fact, that's something we're considering. And this is a teacher who also has been asking me the last couple of years. She, a couple of times a year, does stargazing with the community, brings the parents up and the students from Frontier Trail, and they meet out on the lawn and set up the telescopes and look at stars. She's been after me for two years saying, boy, it'd be really cool if I had an iPad to do some of the neat apps that you could do with stargazing. So, that's just a real current example. We were, this is going just off, just a bit on what Connie has up there with science, social science, foreign language, and vocal music. We were blessed to get Latha Public Schools Foundation grant, and this was from our library. And what we noticed in our library is our biographies were becoming quite antiquated. And one of the ways we addressed that is through eBooks and iPads. And so, the foundation gave us some iPads. And instead of buying full collections of books, biographies, that our students would be reading, we were able to do that, download on those iPads, and students could access it that way. And so, I think that's been really good to see in the library. And then, this is one that I participated in, and I had a lot of fun with. In social studies, you know, they're always doing current events, and it can be a sit-and-get where the teacher or student comes up to front of the class, shares their current event, and that's kind of the end of it. Well, I went in recently, iPads were distributed, and what we did, there's a program much like Twitter, it's called Today's Meet. And we each were assigned an iPad, including me. We had two minutes to read it, and then, just like a blog, we started firing what we learned about that current event, and it was going up on the screen as each student in my group, including myself, shared about that current event. And it was really, really engaging, it was really fun. The group eyes in, we switched current events and wrote about that one. But that was one other example. And then, I'll just kind of finish with what I think is a really good quote, and this was shared by one of my teachers who's been involved in the TAPS program. She said, "The reality of using the one-to-one device is contingent on staff development and knowing that everything is not going to work out perfectly at first, and not being afraid to let the students help each other and the teacher." She talked a lot about that, how much the kids help her. "As a teacher, you start small, you try different things, and before you know it, the students are working through lessons in half the time. Why? Because they're in charge of their learning, and the sky's the limit when they're motivated by using a device that belongs to them."
Thanks, Dr. Smith. So, in conclusion, we are bringing this report to you tonight to consider, to approve at next month's board meeting for a one-to-one iPad deployment at all nine middle schools. Should you approve next month, we would plan to begin to deploy devices to and provide training and professional development to our staff beginning late spring and subsequently provide in-depth training infused at summer conference this June and throughout the summer months. This would be followed by a fall 2015 student device deployment and a thorough and continued plan, of course, for staff and student training and professional development throughout the school year. And we would be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
I do have a few questions. So, when we first, number one, I'm very excited about this and very excited about the one-on-one and every student having a chance to have an iPad. When we first started looking at this, there were several different devices we looked at. I know you looked at iPads, and I think you looked at surfaces, and were there other ones above and beyond that also?
We also looked at a lightweight, new lightweight HP laptop. And that has, it's a much improved laptop, longer battery life, quicker in on, almost an instant on really for that laptop, but it's still a laptop. And so, it's the features and functionalities that are provided on the iPad that the staff that really felt like that was kind of the pushing them over the edge to the iPad as the device of choice.
Okay. With that, you know, one of the things we had talked about initially was with the iPads, you get to do a lot more visual and animation and all that. But we were talking about in the middle school level, they're going to write more papers, do things such as that. Can you talk to a little bit about, you know, that's where I thought Surface was going to be swayed a little bit versus the iPad. Are they going to have all that same functionality that they would have?
That was definitely a concern, and Rita's passing my iPad around actually right now. It's connected to, through the Lightning adapter, to a keyboard, which would be one of the pieces of the solution that we will be requesting. Those keyboards would be a classroom set in all of our English Language Arts classrooms so that the feature of a laptop is not lost with the device inside of a Language Arts classroom. And then, we're also taking a look at how many other areas we might need to have a classroom set in or a shared department set of those devices. You're welcome to type on that. It very much gives you a feel of a laptop. It connects, like I said, with the adapter, so there's not the Bluetooth complexity for middle school students to have to deal with and that kind of cumbersome type of thing.
So, the different softwares like Word, Excel, PowerPoint?
Another thing that's really a wonderful thing that has just been announced with Microsoft is our ability to provide to all of our students and staff, as a matter of fact, Office 365, which allows them that industry-standard software on the iPad as well as installing it on up to five devices at home as well. So, they will have the ability to use the same software as if it was on a Surface tablet or a laptop as well. And saving to the cloud, so they would have access to those files at home as well.
And that was one of the other questions. So, the information that they're going to have on here, they're going to have access to it when they go home, if they have an iPad at home or any other kind of device at home, they'll still have access to all of that?
Absolutely. And they will be taking these devices home.
Oh, they will.
They will.
So, that was kind of a question. So, are these assigned at the classroom level or are they assigned to a student?
Student level.
Okay. So, they'll be walking around in the hallways and everything with their iPads going forward and assigned to it?
They will, securely inside of a case.
You might notice the case that's on that particular iPad. That's the case that we purchased for the student iPad. And as of today, I can tell you, we have not had one student iPad broken. And that really says a lot about the case that you purchased for them. That does add a little bit of cost to the project, well worth it.
And one of the reasons we really encourage the taking of them home is that addresses the equity access for students that don't have that technology at home or have to share it with three or four other siblings at home. So, that's one of the main reasons why we really, really are excited about that possibility.
You know, the other nice thing about an iPad is so many of the apps, while you download them from the Internet, you don't necessarily have to have an Internet connection to run the app once it's on the device. So, those students that don't have Internet access at home, they still have the ability to use the tools and the apps that are on the iPad. So, that also kind of levels the playing field a bit.
And if this is approved, sorry, if this is approved next month, when is the rollout?
For staff, it would be in May and leading up to summer conference, so we could have some really, a wide breadth and scope of professional development that's offered. We already have lots of Apple trainers that are going to be onsite through the elementary deployment. We would add to that and increase the availability at summer conference for our staff as well as summer training and PD. And then, the student devices would be deployed in the fall, in August.
Will students pay a fee much like they would when they check out a book for the, for the life of the year?
We're discussing several options that, options that way, and with business and finance and John, and haven't reached a conclusion yet on how that will be addressed.
Okay. We'll kind of let John lead that decision.
We have neighboring districts who have one-to-one initiatives. I'm sure we can look at how they're doing it and see how successful they've been.
There's many, many examples and about as many different ways as you can do it, but I'm sure we'll come up with the best one. I wanted to publicly thank Connie Smith for leading us through this project in the last 18 months. Our middle school principals have done a phenomenal job helping with the TAPS and getting out in classrooms, giving us feedback. So, we really appreciate everything that they've done. We're very excited to be at this point. So, we'll be back with you in February.
Great.
Rod, I have a quick question.
Yep.
What, you know, we talked about the excitement of the interaction, the students and everything. What else is there on the other end of it as far as the teachers, as far as, you know, grading? You know, what other, how else are they using on the other end of, you know, the unseen end of it?
Actually, one of the, one of the things I had, the same teacher, I read the quote at the end, and I just didn't share it tonight because I didn't want to be too long. But she, with parent view and teacher view and student view, you know, we have all the kids now using student view. And one of the things she loves about the iPads, and this would, could be the norm, is when the kids first sit down and start their bellwork, she has them right away, just look at missing assignments and check their grade. So, that's one way. And then, I've seen teachers taking them into team meetings, and it's back to Connie's, you know, comment, it's about the student, but the teachers are also thrilled about the portability. So, they're sitting in team meetings now, and they're looking at things on teacher view, whether it's, you know, whatever data they need to pull up, they're able to do that, and it's quick. Is that what you're asking or is, yeah, yeah. Staff-wise, I think it's one of the other things I said, you know, it'll take the training to use them and...
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Rod, Connie, and Rita. So, I guess one last thing. So, we got the elementaries out, getting ready to do middle school. I know we haven't even got this rolled out.
I know what your question is.
Any thoughts and ideas of bringing your own device to the high schools when we're going to be better prepared for that?
We have a meeting scheduled with our high school TAPS teachers in February, and so, we will be meeting with them to garner how that is going at the high school level and take a look at whether they need more information, more time, that kind of thing, and be ready to move on that as soon as, soon as we can.
Yes, I did have one more question I thought about. So, students that have an iPad at home, are they going to be allowed to bring that in or are they going to be assigned this one?
They would be assigned this one. There's many reasons for that. Any of the apps that we have that we need to, we would, we're using a mobile device management system to push those out to our, each of the individual iPads for students as well as, you know, just the standard Wi-Fi connection, that it needs to be a device that is recognized by our district as a district-owned device in order for it to access the full bandwidth of our, of our network. So, there's many other reasons for that, too.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the 21st century high school expansion.
I'm really thrilled to have the opportunity to talk with you a little bit about the expansion, the opportunities that we've had first semester and will continue second semester as we develop these two new 21st century programs. Certainly, our vision statement in the school district is students prepared for their future. And we do that as we are helping students go through their elementary program, their middle school program, their high school program in order to be prepared for post-secondary and careers. And as you look at it, probably our pinnacle, if you will, of educational opportunities at the high school level. We have four wonderful high schools in this district, and so, we're very excited about that. You know, you think about, we have wonderful comprehensive programs. We have, we have a plethora of content areas. We have advanced programs. We have remedial programs. We have fine arts. We have athletics and activities. But we had determined as a school district that our students take many different paths as they're going through their high school career and eventually to the post-secondary and their careers. So, with that, we also have some select programs that are in select high schools, and those are our 21st century programs. In addition, we have our advanced technical center programs. Let's focus just for a minute, if we will, on the 21st century programs. We currently have 11 of those programs throughout the district, and it's quite exciting to see that plethora of classes that we have opportunities for our students. And of course, these are transfer programs, and they are only at select high schools. But we also know that while we have currently four high schools, we're about to unveil our fifth high school, 2017. You had the opportunity to do that little groundbreaking. And so, with that, we are going to be adding two new additional 21st century programs at Olatha West, public safety and green technology. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the development of those two particular programs. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with this development for these programs. We began on September the 22nd, and these are just pictures of people that were around the table. I want you to know that we had over 90 individuals sardined, I was going to say crowded, crowded in this room. We had individuals representing the city of Olatha. We had the chief of police. We had the chief of the fire department. We had assistant city manager. We had individuals from federal and county government, EPA, city water, county water. We had individuals from higher education, JCC, CKU, et cetera. We had individuals from the State Department. We had individuals from businesses, Black and Veatch and Burnson McDonald and Keywell Power. We had individuals from our architectural firm that were very intricately involved in this opportunity. We had our administrators. We had our district staff. We had wonderful teachers, coordinators, facilitators. It was amazing to watch the energy in this particular room. I'd like to take just a moment because some of those individuals are represented here this evening. So, would anybody stand that was on our 21st century enhancement expansion program, please stand? I want to thank them. They're very important to our process. On September the 22nd was our very first meeting in this room. We had an opportunity, first of all, to do a little memory walk, if you will, a historical review of why we have the 21st century programs and how they were developed. Did a little piece on that, being the historian these days. We also then had an opportunity to share a vision of what Olatha West was going to be like, because we knew it was very important for folks to get an idea of the whole building before we started building those two specialty programs. And we are very fortunate to have with us architectural representation, Taryn Kenny and Rachel Schneider were able to be here. I also planned with Christian Owens, Long Distance to Texas. And they were here that evening to give a glimmer of what Olatha West is going to be like and all the features that we have built into that particular school. So, that was very exciting. In addition, after we had the opportunity on September 22nd to have the vision, we knew that we needed to go into next phase, which I call Phase One, and that was the program shell, if you will. At these, we had two opportunities. We had two half-days on which you can see all the things that we were able to accomplish in those two half-days. Everything from introductions and making sure we knew who was in the room, why these programs, a little bit of a mind stretch, and all the way up to post-secondary opportunities and experiences. Let me walk you through just a few of those pieces. First of all, we explained why we had these two programs. Why did we come up with public safety and green technology? We went through the little bit of the process and talked about the fact that we looked at labor research, for example. We looked at our partners in the community and the needs in the community. We had lots of possibilities that we could come up with, but we ended up with public safety and green technology, feeling that it would fill a hole for what we are, opportunities we have for our students, but also would help to meet both labor statistics as well as our community needs. We had lots of criteria for making sure when we picked programs, of course, student interest. And you notice I put that twice, student interest at the top and student interest at the bottom because of our uniqueness of our 21st century programs. We also shared what our criteria was that we were building a 21st century program around. We wanted to make sure we had specialized coursework, and that's why we have it only at a select high school. We want to make sure we had extension opportunities for students, that we had an opportunity to have advisory councils, all those pieces that create 21st century programs. We also did a little bit of reminder, and the one I always like to talk about is that our programs are unique. They are four-year high school programs. They are not just taking a course or a couple of courses. They're not just at the junior, senior year. Our 21st century programs are transfer programs, and they are for a comprehensive opportunity that nine, 12-year. So, that, you know, wanted to make sure that we had that in our mind as we built our program. The very first thing that we had an opportunity to do as well was to kind of stretch our minds, because we all came from different perspectives. We all came from different orientations, and we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity. So, we read articles, we had a lot of information, and we watched some videos. I'm going to have us watch just a moment of a video, if we could. We'll see how this works out, obviously. And here was a program that we were able to discover, a green technology program, happens to be in California, that was one of the things that we're looking at to make sure that we're looking at what other people have developed and what could we take that would be wonderful for our program. So, just a moment of watching it.
As high school students, we get a lot of assignments, but rarely do we get an assignment that affects people halfway around the world. Students at this high school got the opportunity to do just that, and it fits inside a suitcase. Let's head inside to find out more about it. At Laguna Creek High School in Elk Grove, California, this classroom looks more like a workshop.
Very heavy power tools, saw, the drill, nail gun, a lot of dangerous stuff.
And what kind of class requires hard hats and safety goggles?
It's called GEDA, stands for Green Energy Technology Academy. It involves a lot of like solar stuff, working with solar panels, wind turbines.
And we're building solar suitcases.
One of the pieces we're going to build today, I'll walk you through it, is this support piece right here, all right? When this is in the case, it keeps the components protected. See all the wiring here?
Eric Johnson is the coordinator and instructor for the Green Energy Technology Academy.
The other thing I want to show you is actually how to start drilling the holes correctly on the component, the component board here. Really, the way it works, it starts with the sun, and with the radiant energy of the sun, it's collected by the solar panel. That turns into electrical energy, and then, we interface the panels with the system through this plug in this outlet right here. Once the energy comes into the system, it runs to the charge controller, and then, it runs out to the battery to be stored.
Like other suitcases, this one is well-packed, but not with clothes and a toothbrush.
Very cool.
And so, this is a 15-foot cord. You can imagine in the middle of a hut, you just have this hanging, that's lighting the entire hut.
A hut? That's right. These suitcases travel a long way.
So, that just gives you a little piece of a glimmer, and that's one of our mind-stretching opportunities that we went through to make sure that we were looking at some other programs and other possibilities out there to just stretch our mind. So, we did that both in law enforcement, fire safety, public safety, and in green technology. What we ended up with was we're going to have two strands in our public safety area. It's going to be fire safety and law enforcement will be our two strands. Students will by their sophomore year, select one of those strands after an introductory year in their freshman year. In the green technology area, we ended up with two strands as well, energy and power and ecology and sustainability were our two areas there. However, students in the green technology, at least at this time, will be doing both of these areas, so they'll get a wide breadth of green technology. As we went through, of course, we brainstormed careers, and that was quite an interesting opportunity. My gosh, there's a lot of careers that these paths will lead to. An opportunity to look at, for example, that you could have anything from parking lot, parking enforcement officer, all the way up to someone that is going to get a criminal justice degree. So, again, those paths, those multiple paths that we have for our students. We brainstormed post-secondary paths and certifications, certifications that you could earn possibly as you're a student. Those are a little bit difficult, because some of those have some age requirements. For example, you have to be 18 to get it, but we know that our students will have an opportunity to get some of those certifications and also certifications that they would get later on. And of course, those post-secondary paths. Here was one from green technology, was kind of interesting. Oh, my gosh, it's just an opening up world and opportunities in different paths and certifications that you can get in this particular area, very broad area, actually. We also brainstormed partners. Oh, my gosh, it was amazing, the different partnerships that were starting to come out of the conversations and the activities that our students could participate in and be involved in. It was great. We also looked at advisory council, every one of our 21st century programs. We also looked at advisory council, every one of our 21st century programs, it will have an advisory council, so we wanted to make sure that we have individuals that we can tap for that experience as well, and we were able to do that. We then began talking about coursework. Okay, what are we going to have? What's a freshman going to take, and what's a sophomore and a junior and a senior going to take? And that was quite an activity. We started out with a really clean little chart, and for example, this is green technology, same thing in public safety. Then we started messing with it, and we came up with all these coursework. Actually, our students would have to go 365 days a year, seven hours a day, just in these areas. We had more than we could deal with, but we were able to cull those down. And again, a lot of messiness as we went through our different coursework that our students would participate in. We also looked at building and resource needs, and we knew where, we had heard already from the architects where these programs would be located, but we knew there might be some special things that we needed to consider either for building or facility needs, not too late to get that in. And of course, like I said, we had architects at all of our meetings, and as well as resources that we might need. We, gosh, amazing, the things that we might need, like those little red suits for tactical defensive training and different things for our solar panels. We also talked about there were things we were not going to be purchasing, and we did not need to worry about those, so some people got very excited about some of those pieces. We then ended, if you can imagine these, all this information that we got in these two half-days, as well as the introductory session on September 22nd, we ended with elevator speeches. And it was political time, maybe we should have called them stump speeches, but an opportunity for someone to, here's a father and a daughter that got in an elevator, fake elevator, of course, and someone that would just happen to get in that elevator with them and be able to say in a few minutes, what is it about this program that might be exciting? So we're going to have an opportunity to listen to just a little bit of a, an elevator speech created very quickly, an opportunity, and this is obviously someone from the public safety side.
About the public safety or 21st program, central program at Olathe West?
I would love to hear about it.
Sure, all right. Where are you guys going?
I'm working on floor 81.
Floor again?
81.
81? I'm only going to floor six, so. Well, the 21st century program is a comprehensive program that's going to give you some exposure to both law enforcement and fire safety, and obviously it's going to prepare you.
I want to be a police.
You want to be a police officer? That's a great profession. It's a career you can be proud of. Nothing against my firefighter brothers, they do a great job, too, but obviously you'll be able to have an opportunity to be exposed to both fire safety and police officers and programs.
So that's just a little glimmer, and it was quite exciting, the enthusiasm people were able to exude on this little elevator speech for these 21st century programs, the shell of which they were creating. And again, I really, a lot of kudos to the folks who sat around. It's difficult work actually creating programs, because you don't always agree, you have to come to consensus, and you're moving rather rapidly. So it was a great opportunity. But of course, you know, that was really just the beginning, and now we will go into the next, oh, in addition, we've had some additional meetings, and I have to thank the individuals who have participated in this. For example, we've had one meeting with our fire department representatives, and that was great with the architects and some, our CFO and our Dr. Barry and Greg Thomason, to make sure are there things that we need to consider that, I knew nothing about fire hydrants, I've learned about fire hydrants and ladders and all kinds of things. We're going to have a follow-up meeting after the architects went back and did some things. We're actually also going to meet with our police department to make sure that, is there anything in the facilities that we need to take into consideration at this point? And then, as I said, we've really had great representation at our green technology, and we'll be meeting with those as well. So we have lots of things that we'll have some additional meetings related to the facility and resource needs. But now we need to go into Phase Two, and that is the course and curriculum development. Again, the next exciting phase as we continue to appeal this onion that we have here. We're going to be looking at our course development, and we have a team of people in both areas that have already volunteered, thank you, that will be coming together. In fact, our very first meeting will be on public safety, and that will be next Wednesday. Half-day again, working on that. And we'll be working and creating some courses, for example, the introductory to public safety, what does that look like for a freshman? What are we going to include in the courses for law enforcement one and law enforcement two, fire safety one and fire safety two? We're doing a course called Spanish for First Responders, and we have some individuals that we're working on that, very excited about that. People in the field are very excited for us to take that on as an element that we would have here. In green technology, we'll also be working on that, we'll be developing courses like the investigations in green technology, energy and power, and economics class, which we know is very important when you relate to green technology, there's a lot of economic questions related to that piece as well. So again, very excited about the next phase that we'll be going through. A lot of thank you to lots of people from the board for having a vision that we would expand our 21st century programs, because we're really looking at the future, and our future is ahead. Those sixth graders today have an opportunity to join in our programs here at Olathe West, and won't that be exciting? I've already had some connection from people that are thinking that their children will be going to these programs, so it's exciting, and we need to finish developing them so we're ready for them. We're really visioning the future, and that's really what our 21st century programs are, certainly innovating for today and for tomorrow. So that's just a quick update about where we are at in the development process. I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, that's very informative. It's exciting to see us to continue to expand and open up some additional opportunities. I guess I didn't do the math, thinking that they are the sixth graders, but they are the sixth graders today, are going to be the ones who are going to be able to be the first ones to start some of these programs, so that is exciting.
I think it's going to be great, and a great opportunity for our community as well. There's going to be great partnerships that are developing out of this, and can't wait to get those kids and have these opportunities. Wonderful for our students.
Will some of the courses, Dr. Banikowski, require training that certified staff either in science or the social sciences would not necessarily have?
We might have some, especially, if you will, in the law enforcement and one and two, and our fire safety. We've certainly been at the table with individuals who teach these courses at JCCC, but they are also professional fire people and law enforcement folks. But we've had Jim Payne at the table as well, so they can start looking at what are some of our certification issues that we might deal with. And we really have been opened up at the state department for some of our certifications, so I think there's some good possibilities. There obviously is going to need to be training. I'm really excited about our physical education and health class that will be particularly for public safety students as they work on that area. And again, that's going to require some training. We're fortunate, we have some teachers, actually, that were formerly law enforcement or fire safety individuals. The green technology is a lot of science, so that would be perfect. In case you're bored, this would be a great program to join.
Thank you very much. So we have about six, seven minutes, John, can you be able to? So our next presentation is cash balance review, and John Hutchison is going to speak to that as quickly as he can.
Trying to figure out what I did wrong to have to follow great presentations like that with the discussion of cash balances, but I'll do it in five minutes. Historically, you all know that December is the most critical month for school districts with regards to cash flow, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at and discuss a little bit some of the dialogue going around the state regarding cash balances. If you were to look at our treasurer's report for this evening, on the surface, it appears that as of December 31st of 2014, we have $161.6 million in cash balance. However, you also know that a large portion of that is not available for our use for mid-year cash flow. Historically, we've always grouped our funds based on the restrictions around the expenditure. And the list of funds that you see here, we traditionally call their operating dependent funds. They're dependent on the state funding formula for funds. But the reality is, there is actually another group of funds that while you have, they have restrictions on how they can be spent, they are, you are allowed to utilize their balance throughout the year to help with cash flow. So this evening, I wanted to do my analysis, so I'm not accused of being overreactive or anything, and be completely transparent about every dime that we could possibly use to meet cash flow mid-year in a school district is represented. If you forget about those funds you just saw, the other funds make up 88% of our fund balance, but they are constitutionally or statutorily restricted. We cannot touch the funds, it would be a violation of law. So the 18 funds that appeared on the other slides make up only 12% of our fund balances. And in our case, that 12% really equates to about $13 million. So we had the flexible funds that we could use to help with cash flow at the end of December was $13 million. That equates to something called cash days, 15 cash days. What's a day's cash? A day's cash is you take your full budget, divide it by 365, and for us, it's about $830,000 a day. That's the size of our district. And you divide that balance, and you say, you know what? If all revenue stopped, we can survive two weeks. Now, the good news is, that is actually up from nine days last year. And the reason it's up is not that we had a windfall of money, it has to do with the 20 mils that is levied across the state. It's being collected differently this year. It used to come straight to us, it was deducted off the total the state had to give us throughout the year for state aid, but now it goes to the state and they have to give all of it to us. But they didn't change the percentage we get each month. And so we have benefited by about $6 million more by the time we got to December that the state had to pay out to us, even though those taxes haven't been collected till January. If you want to look at it from the old standpoint of operating dependent, we would only have money in one fund, that's the contingency reserve, there's about $6.1 million there, and that's seven days' cash, if you would try to do a comparison going back. That reserve represents about 4% of our operating budget. And if you look at the operating, the reserves at the end of the fiscal year, June of 14, we were at about 6.5%. That's 1% below what the state is required statutorily to maintain. So even though it feels good at 6.5, the state is required to have a highway reserve, but we're sometimes criticized for having cash balances. Yes, sir?
Mr. Hutchison, last year, didn't we have $9 million in contingency reserve?
At the end of December, last year, if you recall, we went down to about $18 left in the contingency reserve. This year, we went into it about $3 million, so there's $6 million left.
So basically, you said that as of 12/31, we'd used $3 million of our reserves?
Correct.
As cash flow.
Cash flow.
Because it'll be back to $9 million when we finish.
Let's take a quick look at some of the issues going around the state and try to kind of get at the facts. We continue to read of legislators, advocacy groups, and others that believe that perhaps our cash balances should be swept, that if we don't use the funds, we should give them back to the state. It kind of flies in the face of some of the moves that the legislature has made, though. About four years ago, we used to have a requirement that we couldn't exceed 6% in the contingency reserve. The legislature moved that to 10%. Then in 2012, they removed the cap altogether. So we're, in a way, we were encouraged to plan ahead with cash flow and build balances for cash flow, yet now there are discussions about sweeping. The state has the ability to borrow from other funds. Read in the paper that in order to plug a budget shortfall, we would borrow from capers, so perhaps there'll be a borrowing from the highway fund. That 88% that's sitting there, we can't borrow from that. I go to jail if I tap into that in order to meet cash flow. Cash balances, we read also, there's been a study across the state, and it's true, cash balances are up among all the school districts in the state of Kansas. However, as a percentage of their expenditures, they declined for the third year in a row. So as we all grow bigger, we're going to spend more, we're going to raise our balances to keep pace, yet when you divide that by our expenditures, it has actually decreased. If we were to reduce our balances, or they were to be swept, it really does not help the state's cash flow either. We would be requesting money earlier, because we would not have feeder money or seed money to begin our fiscal years, which is going to put an undue burden on the state system as well. Cash has a lot, a variety of reasons why we need it, as any good business does. I know many of you run your own businesses or are in charge of businesses, and you wouldn't think of operating without having some cash reserve. Sometimes, it's needed for long-term planning. We do not raise enough money to do a large textbook adoption. We have to do that over multiple years, build a balance, give the adoption. Cash is also needed to suppress fears of recisions. Like any prudent business, we plan ahead for cash flows in rainy days, and basically we've had a typhoon for the last six years. We have to keep reserves, because we're never, we never know if there's going to be a recision mid-year, and so that's just good prudent planning to do that. We have to cover timing issues. It's not a, it's not a perfect, we raise $100, spend $100. We start teacher contracts in August, and our main source of revenue is property taxes, whether it's coming through a formal or directly with us, those are not collected till December and distributed till January. Other times, we get the money first and then spend it. But those balances are there in order to handle our cash flow. And finally, cash, we need cash to maintain stewardship. I said it's okay to utilize some of additional funds to cover cash flow, like driver's ed, but it doesn't make sense to sweep a driver's ed fund. A fee that we've charged locally for our students, hand it off to the state. It makes more sense to keep it in the balance, where it can either keep from having increasing fees or even decrease the fees the next year if we've collected too much. One final comment about the balances, I just want the board to be aware, although we gained balance because of the way the 20 mils is collected as of December, I requested an additional $5 million from the state in January as an insurance policy, so to speak. We're not sure of the timing of how quickly with the 20 mils being collected, how quick it's going to get to the state and come back to us in our, in our payments in January. I did not want to get caught in January, even though we have $13 million. Each month's payroll is $16 million, and our AP run is about $6 million. As I said, we only have about two weeks' worth. I want to make sure that that payment comes from the state in a timely manner. We do have that vehicle where we're allowed to make an appeal for additional funds. It's basically coming early, they'll take it from our next one, but I just want to make sure we have it. I don't believe we'll meet it, but I wanted the insurance, and we'll see. I want to make sure that January is not the new December, that January is the critical month because of the changes in how those are collected. With that, I take any questions? How'd I do on time?
Ten. Ten.
That's because Mr. Parker interrupted him.
You know, John, one of the things, you mentioned, you've got 15 days left of reserve. And that, honestly, if you think about it, generally, that's not a lot. You know, most businesses don't run on just 15 days, most households don't run on 15 days. And that's the one thing that we've got to be cautious about here, because of all the things we're having the legislator tighten its down and looking at this and that. Well, it's a big number, and I think that's where it is, people take a look at it, that's a big, well, it is, but not compared to the money that we go through on a monthly basis. And so appreciate everything that you do. Some of these formulas and how all this is calculated and how well this is watched is a challenge. So I want to thank you for everything that you do with that, and keeping us informed and helping educate us on why it's important to keep the reserve and what we're going to make in order to retain them and keep them. Any other questions? All right, so it's 10 till 7, time for a couple break. You're doing things right, Dr. Barry.
There's cake out there. There's cake to be eaten.
Okay, there is cake out in the lobby, I saw. Is that something to do with school board appreciation month or something?
So enjoy yourself, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, we'll be back in here
at 7 o'clock. Thank you. As educators working for the district, we follow the education news, we keep up with legislative challenges, we read articles and books, we attend meetings and more. We are passionate and interested because we care and because it's our job. We are passionate and interested because we care and because it's our job. Our board members follow the education news, keep up with legislative challenges, read articles and books, attend meetings and more. They do it because they are passionate, they care, and they are interested in the education of students in our community. But it's their second job, as they all have full-time day jobs. We always kind of joke about the check being in the mail, or there's a new policy for doubling the pay of board members. But their pay is in the satisfaction that they feel in helping students to grow and achieve in our district. Board members are at the forefront of our district's efforts to prepare our kids for their future. The board members sitting here tonight have recently helped to open a new elementary school, are building a new high school for future high school students, have provided iPads to our elementary students, have provided up-to-date resources and textbooks for students to use, and the list goes on and on. Being a board member steals time away from their jobs, from their spouses, from their families, from their other interests that they have and would like to have. Board members share in the joy of student successes in our classrooms and on our playing fields and courts. They share in our sorrow of student death, illnesses, staff challenges, and more. This is Board Appreciation Month, and the governor has signed a proclamation calling upon all citizens to join in recognizing the dedication and commitment of local school board members. We should really do this every month. On behalf of the almost thirty thousand students in our district, almost five thousand employees in a community of a hundred and thirty thousand, we thank you for your service to our community as a board member. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Berry, appreciate that. All right. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room, state your name and your address. Now, we do have one pre-registered, Mike Round. He's here. Please come forward, thank you.
My name is Mike Round, and I live at one-three-two-three-four Long Street in Overland Park. And I'd like to talk about the results of a recent survey by the National Association of School Boards regarding the federal school lunch program. Eighty-four percent of schools saw an increase in plate waste. Eighty-two percent of schools saw an increase in costs. Seventy-seven percent of schools saw a decrease in student participation in the program. The irony of these devastating figures is they were released as the association celebrated National School Lunch Week. This was at the end of last year. There's nothing to celebrate here. With food quality falling, students going hungry, food being wasted, and costs rising, the association's solution was to beg Congress and the Department of Agriculture for flexibility. The federal budget in December gave their response. It isn't going to happen. There might be some sodium requirements that will be lessened eventually, but in general, the program is here to stay. I've used the word "federal" several times because this is a federal program, though it is voluntary. Many districts have opted out, but given the survey figures above, one would expect many more to say good riddance to this program. So why haven't they? Because it's voluntary in name only. When a district opts out, they forfeit money designated for free and reduced lunches. For some districts, that's not a lot of money, and the decision is easy. To others, it's a lot of money. For us, it's about five million dollars a year and thirty percent of the student population. For five million dollars in cost, I'd expect five million dollars at least in value. As the survey showed, it's not even close. And the tragic thing is, the thirty percent of the students this program is supposed to be helping, they're getting bad food and throwing a lot of it away, and so are the seventy percent of students unaffected by the program. By accepting this money and the strings attached, we've advocated control to the federal government, and it's not supposed to be that way. The School Board Association called the survey results unintended consequences of this federal school lunch program. To me, that's nonsense, because when there's a direct cause-effect link between an action and a consequence of that action, the consequences are either intended or the policy itself is flawed. All of this makes the job of food services, the hard-working people who are trying to do a good job, impossible. To me, they're being asked to spin straw into gold or to make bricks without straw, and it isn't going to happen. I don't know if we participated in that NESB survey, but I've seen pictures, heard stories of the lunches, I think we all have, not just on the Internet, but from our own cafeterias. It's not that good, but it could be good. Let's give serious consideration to cutting ties with this federal program in the process of providing good food to all students, also restoring local control. This is what our federal system is all about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Round, appreciate that. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move forward. We're up to the consent items. Is there anyone in particular that anybody needs, have any questions about, or do I have a motion to move forward on all these?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have to pull up five-ten legislative positions.
I'll pull that one out, okay. Any other ones? And do I have a motion to cover five-oh-one through five-oh-nine and five-eleven?
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered five dot zero-one through five dot zero-nine and five dot eleven as presented.
Second.
So I have first by Dr. Daniels, and the second by Mr. Poland.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Great. So five-point-one-zero legislative positions. I suspect that you have some comments with that?
I just wanted to clarify position there as far as the date of we supporting the elections to be held in April. Since I publicly opposed that to the legislature last year, I just wanted to basically go on public of stating that I still, you know, feel the way that I felt publicly last year, the fact that I think we are doing a disservice to our voters, having an election at a time when we know that nobody's going to show up for the election. If you look at the numbers, the difference in the numbers that people show up for fall elections versus spring elections, it's staggering. And I think the same people that, you know, that are supporting our school districts, we ought to find a way, if being a data-driven student district, if we looked at that data, we sure wouldn't support the elections if we analyzed the data of how many people attend the elections in spring versus fall. So I'm going to vote for the legislative positions, but I just wanted to publicly clarify my position on that so that I don't feel hypocritical when I speak later.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Poland.
So I would move to accept five dot ten, two thousand and fifteen legislative positions.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Poland for five-point-one-zero on the twenty-fifteen legislative positions, and a second by Mr. McCune. Will call, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Very good. All right, now we'll move on to action bids, contracts, and agreements. We only have two of these out here, so we've got six-point-oh-one digital projector and peripheral hardware bid. Do I have any comments, questions? Look for a motion, then.
Seeing none, I would move to approve six dot zero-one to approve the technology bid for digital projectors and replacement of HD equipment as presented, UO two as well, and six dot zero-two, motion to approve white copy paper bid to replenish the district's supply of copy paper in preparation for spring, order for film-up with a minimum of four truckloads and a max of seven with pricing held firm through March of two thousand and fifteen as presented.
Second.
So we're going to do a two-fer here? We've got six dot oh-one, six dot oh-two. We have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Mrs. Martin. Will call?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Very good. All right, future action items. Any questions, comments, concerns about any of the future action items? Seeing none, we'll move forward then. Information written, any questions about the Head Start Director Monthly Report or construction change? We're rolling along. All right. Topics for discussion, any of the board members have any topics they'd like to bring up for discussion that are not on the agenda? I guess it's back to you, Dr. Berry, now for your comments.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the weather. I want to say thank you to the parents, students, staff, and others who are understanding about the fact that it's cold in Kansas in winter. There is no magic number for us when we put this together, so I want to explain that a little bit. It's a combination of the elements when we decide whether to have school or not. Snow on the ground, for instance, past couple days might have impacted the decision. We look at wind chill, actual temperature, whether the buses start, et cetera, they all plays a part into that. When we cancel school, we disrupt the work plans and childcare plans for parents across the district. When we hold school, some students have to deal with walking in the cold, cold, cold temperatures. We try to consider all areas of town, all schools, all methods of getting to school. Just recently, part of a coalition was in the office, speaking with one of our staff members that the district's been working with, and they confirmed that many times, the best place for kids on these days is in school. It's warm, they get their breakfast, they get their lunch, and it's, by the way, a lot of good learning goes on. But it's a difficult decision, and trying to recover and be a little light about it, I don't read some of the social media because I don't think I could stand up to that, but someone shared a tweet with me from an Olathe South student. As you know, our principal is usually out front directing traffic, and so the tweet said, "If we go to school, Phil will freeze." And the hashtag, the hashtag was "save Phil." So optimistically, somebody said the other day, "We're one day closer to spring break." I'm still in the mood, unfortunately, that we have a lot of winter to go, so again, we'll continue to try to make the best decision we can. Most of you are aware that at noon on December thirtieth, the court case dealing with school finance in Kansas, the last ruling was announced. We're not going to get too excited about sharing too much yet, there's a lot of things that you can read, but we know it's going to be appealed, and so we are still, as much as the end of this calendar year at least, before we might know something. The court was very careful to say not give a number in terms of what base state aid per pupil, what the number should be. They did talk a lot about what the number had been and what it would be if we'd kept up with inflation and those kinds of things, but they didn't come out and say, "Here's the number." They also did pick up a lot and share about the dependence that we're getting in our formula on the local option budget. And as you know, we're a district that has put before our voters, and we put the extra two percent to go to thirty-three percent of our general fund of LOB, and so we're, again, the fear, I think, is in Kansas, we are separating some districts from the others by doing more locally and how that impacts the responsibility overall of the state. So again, that's got a real implication. They also talked, the court stressed that the continuity and stability of funding is important for institutional planning, and we couldn't agree with them more. That, again, consistency for us to know what's happening from year to year is very important to us. So we'll kind of keep watching and see what happens through the appeal. Also, want to mention something else in Topeka, that the K-12 Efficiency and Performance Commission wrapped up their work officially this week in Topeka on Tuesday. They are still to submit to the legislature a formal report, so we'll get a copy of that when it comes out. One of the things that they talked about Tuesday and confirmed is that they're going to require all school districts to have an annual compliance audit. Again, we get audited several times. They finally stuck in that it should be paid for by the state, so it's not an unfunded mandate, so we'll see how that works out. It may not come about because of that. The commission also talked a little bit about the unencumbered balances, which is why I wanted, John, to make sure we talked about it publicly tonight just a little bit. The commission on the balances said, "We should consider what good practices, business practices are." And to me, that almost still states it's a local control for us to determine what some of that might be. So anyway, their report will be forwarded to the legislature for consideration, we'll kind of watch that for everybody. I'd like to call your attention to your calendars. We are slated to host the next full meeting with the city council, the mayor, the city manager and their staff. It's our turn to host, and we're looking at February nineteenth. And so you might take a look at that, and if it's a problem, let Joy know, and then we can kind of regroup. We will host it probably here, or we could go to the tech building and host them there and give a little tour if we wanted to as well. But please look at February nineteenth for that. Some really exciting news to share is that we finished up our Pennies for Shoes campaign as part of the Olathe Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. Again, want to thank Aaron Dugan for the organization of that on behalf of that group, with the help of principals and a lot of others. But we have raised, our kids have raised over twenty-two thousand dollars, which is more than four thousand over the amount that they raised last year. So really incredible that our kids and schools come together. A lot of fun stories in terms of how it was collected and stories of individual kids, but a lot of engagement that happened in our schools, and a lot of our kids in those totals will be recognized at a future city meeting. Want to introduce somebody who's in the audience tonight, new to our staff. We've talked in the past about how sometimes we utilize construction funds to help with some of our projects, and we've taken the stance that we can be more efficient with that and have better services, maybe if we have somebody additionally on staff. And so tonight, a new member of the USD team is Travis Prolangis. Travis, if you'd stand. Travis comes to us from an architectural firm here in Kansas City, Kansas City and Topeka offices, but we are thrilled to have him on board and be working with Greg. Travis is actually a resident and a parent in our school district, so that's even all the sweeter that he's a part of our team now. So welcome, Travis. And the last comment I want to make is I want to make sure that this part does not become a regular part of my comments at board meetings, and that's the announcing of a retirement by central office administrators. We had Dr. Letcher, and then last month, we had Lou Anne. We also had and didn't get a chance to talk about Kathy Musgrave. Kathy is with us tonight, but she has also submitted her retirement and has done an outstanding job for us in terms of her leadership at the Advanced Technical Center and with some of our career in Twenty-Fourth Century programs. We're going to miss her greatly. Tonight, you accepted in the HR report the retirement of Jim Payne as the executive director of HR, and we're going to miss Jim greatly. I'm going to miss Jim. He actually had an entire career before he came to our school district, but he lives here. His kids went to school here, and I want to thank Jim Payne for sharing his skills here for the past five years, and thank you, Jim, for that. With that, I don't have anything else.
So we will need an executive session, and you need how much time? Fifteen? Fifteen minutes? And then we probably need twenty minutes, so...
Move the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and discussing matters related to employer-employee negotiations. Does the board return to the regular meeting at, what, how long you say?
I'll go thirteen, and we'll just do eight o'clock. Is that all right? Eight o'clock?
I'll turn to the regular meeting at eight o'clock in this room. Executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
Second.
Will call, please.
Dr. Daniels, second?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Very good. All right, now we'll move on to action bids, contracts, and agreements. We only have two of these out here, so we've got six-point-oh-one digital projector and peripheral hardware bid. Do I have any comments, questions?